Good morning and thank you for attending and welcome to this meeting on the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and it's been webcast. We have not received any questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Please could I ask everybody to put their mobile device on silent so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And there is no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. I also want to say in terms of facilities, people should know where the gents and the ladies are. I don't think there's anybody here who's new, there's numbers of the public out there. I'm going to ask just colleagues to introduce themselves in order. I'm councillor Argencio, I'm the co-chair of this committee and chairing today. Ruth?
Councillor Ruth Milson, a member of this committee.
Councillor Mary Lee, I represent Donald Ward and I'm substituting for Abdul Sam Mohammed, so I'm looking for colleagues to guide me today. I only got the papers out this morning, I was on it all last night and I'm assuming everybody's had an officer briefing on most of these papers.
I'm councillor Steve Ayr, I'm deputy chair of the policy committee.
I'm Woolhouse, I'm the councillor for Baiton.
Councillor Kevin Oxlough, from Mosworth.
Councillor Martin Phillips for City Ward.
I'm councillor George Loshammond-Hills-Raw and I'm the co-chair of this committee.
And could the officers please introduce themselves, starting from Sarah?
Thank you Chair, Sarah Bennet, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Alexis Chapell, Director of Adult Health and Social Care.
Fiona Martinez, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
We also have Claire who's doing the technical sport for us, thank you Claire. Is there nothing else to mention, is that Fiona? I don't think so. Apologies for absence? We've received two apologies for absence from councillor Abdul Sam Mohammed and councillor Sophia Sayed, we have this one substitute which is Mary Lee. Thanks Fiona. And exclusion of the press, public and press, in item 17, sections of the report are not available to the public and press because they contain exempt information. So when we get to that report, which is right at the end of the meeting, if members of the committee wish to ask questions, we will stop the webcast for that section and then reconnect at the very end of the meeting. Is that okay with everybody? Great. And are there any members that need to declare an interest?
Thank you. It's just a personal interest and just to be sure I wanted to declare it. So I'm a software developer for Access Group that creates software for social care and health products. I just wanted to mention that because that's kind of relevant to number 12, were not mentioned directly and probably won't be contracting with us, but just wanted to mention that in case.
Thanks Martin. And we move on to item five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. I will take the minutes just for accuracy and then if there are any matters arising. The minutes start on page 11 of the printed version, so page 11, I just have a couple of things that in my printed version, which might be a previous printed version, that in section 2.1, there are two kinds of things, it says item with a question mark, I don't know if it's been mended in the, on the version that's been put on the website, sorry, I haven't had the chance to check, just those two and they're in red on mine. Page 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21 and 22. In terms of matters arising, if we go back, is there anything that anybody wants to raise? I just have one little thing, but I think we've done it, in 6.3, we said that we would have a briefing with all councillors, members of the committee, which we had a few weeks back, so that's been done. Is there anything else that anybody else? Okay, brilliant, thank you. And we said we haven't got any public questions and petitions, so we're going on to item seven and Sarah, which is the work programme, and Sarah is going to introduce this item. Thanks Sarah.
Thank you Chair. Yes, the committee has in front of it the work programme item. The committee's work programme is set out at appendix one, that includes any additions and amendments that have taken place since the committee last saw this work programme. Those are identified in part one of appendix one. And members are asked to agree that work programme, including those additions and amendments, and also to give consideration to whether there are any further issues that you would ask were given consideration for inclusion on that agenda or that you wish to add to the work programme. I think that's it Chair, unless anyone has any questions or contributions.
I think there's just been a few things that have been moved from November to December and some from December to March, I think, there's nothing really major, but if you, if members of the committee at any point feel that they want to ask, to have something added, just let us know and we can do it as and when and then present a new work programme. Thank you, thanks Sarah. Item eight, before we start on the reports proper, can I just say I'm going to be very strict with timings because I know that officers have been asked to be brief and I apologize to members for how lengthy the reports are, we had 458 pages of report in the end. We kind of saw the briefings a bit at a time, so we didn't realise how many, but it is a very busy kind of committee and there's so many items and thank you to the officers for writing the reports. So the first item, item eight, first report is from Director of Adult Health and Social Care.
So I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to all social care staff in the city and also to my team. I think that over the last, over the last couple of years as well as two years, what I've seen is contained to see is this incredible passion and dedication for delivering the best outcomes for people in the city and that's ultimately what social care is about, is about improving the lives and outcomes of people in the city and how we ultimately do that and the way in which we do that is really important. And social care is one of the biggest and most challenging agendas, I always think, that's around us now because in delivering these better outcomes for people is what we are trying to do to some degrees as three things at once. We're trying to deliver our services, I know to be prepared for winter, but same token as responding to national reforms, of which there have been many, like the social care and that is particularly this charging reforms, fare cost to care, the CQC assurance and the preparation for liberty protection safeguards, but also team token is taking forward a significant change programme within adult social care and so that we could deliver that better outcomes for people in the city, but also deliver a very much more sustainable adult social care service for the future, recognising, you know, some of the big challenging financial discussions that we've had to have over the last couple of years. And, you know, and again, just come back to I'm very, very proud of my team and also all the social care staff across the city and all our partners who work with us to go and deliver upon these three big things together. And, you know, I think I just wanted to kind of start off by saying that and to recognise the kind of context in which we come to committee today with. Equally, today at committee, we have a range of key reports that help us to go and deliver and take forward our vision and strategy, which was approved by committee earlier on this year. And that's in particular with our future design of social care and the key enablers around it, around technology enabled care, our equipment adaptations, our financial systems, as well as our practice quality and our care governance. And these are all key enablers which are discussed today, but alongside that, our proposals for longer, for delivery upon our current budget, but also longer term, the settlement of a budget for 23, 24. And again, you know, a lot of work we're taking forward, but also sets us up for the future. And then finally, in going forward and thinking about next committee, is what we are already doing is thinking about is how we will know about three key things. Is for the next committee, what we'll be bringing forward is ultimately what's the impact of the autumn budget statement, because that will tell us really, you know, what will happen in terms of charging reforms, fare cost to care and also CQC assurance, be able to report on that back to next committee and give a briefing to members beforehand. But secondly, to talk about, our performance and our quality of adult social care services and that's following on from the local account, which is going to be talked about today and which I'm very proud, you know, of, which has came to us today. And that performance and quality, you know, will be discussion at next committee, what will help us to then go and talk about very much as we're trajectory towards improving the life and outcomes for people of the city, because ultimately that is what we are trying to achieve. So at that point, I'm going to end, I'm going to finally say thank you to all and I'm going to open for questions.
Are there any questions? Ruth?
Thank you Chair, thank you Alexis for this huge report, which I'm not going to claim to have read every word, but it's very comprehensive and I think very, very encouraging. I have questions about the integrated care system and how do you feel that the integration aspect is going so far, it's still quite early days, I guess, and what expectations can we realistically have in terms of healthcare and social care working hand in glove and how are the new ICS structures and decision making bodies within that supporting the changes that you're wanting to make?
Thank you for that and as ever fantastic questions. We have, I think in terms of the, alongside each other, is I think the, and what the, what the new systems offer is an opportunity to think about integration in three different ways. As number one, on a strategic and governance level, is how we connect what we are doing together on a really practical basis. And as members may recall, it was about two or three months ago, I showed a diagram that showed really the very complicated system that is health and social care. And I always think about it from the point of Mr and Mrs Smith, what does this actually mean when your dean care, when your family member needs care? It's our job really is to make that really simple and to make that really seamless in that transition. And so while we could talk all the good game about governance and whatnot, what really matters to people is the experience of individuals and what does that mean in terms of seamless transition? So our focus within adult social care has been around these three points, it's about how we ensure we've got good, good conversations and good connections with our health colleagues in the system as with other partners and we're doing that through, through building a range of systems around that. But more importantly, what we're doing is trying to build really good relationships with, on a delivery and operational level, with our partners in the ICB, within the trusts and also with our wider voluntary sector and with the police colleagues, because ultimately, you know, and how we have, and my target operating model talks about that today, is how we get to that point of very much community connected teams and which are really empowered to work together in a joined up way, so that from the point of view of individuals, what are the experiences at seamless service? And I think we are on a journey towards getting to that in Sheffield, but I think we're setting the right foundations in place between these, these key, key points. And at the committee in December, I'll be bringing forth that kind of very practical paper around what that means in practice for members to see.
Thanks Alexis. Are there any other questions? Okay, so these reports ask, so asks us, the recommendation is to note the Director of Adult Health and Social Care report, is everybody happy with noting that report? Nobody dissent, great. Item nine, I'm not sure who's presenting this, is it you Alexis or? Item nine is the care, the Adult Health and Social Care Care Governance Strategy and Quality Matters Framework. Oh, okay, it's Liam and Janet, thank you.
Hello, hi everyone, Liam Duggan, Assistant Director for Care Governance and Financial Inclusion.
Jack Kerr, I'm Chief Social Work Officer in Adult Social Care.
The purpose of this report is to provide the committee with an update about progress made in implementing the Adult Health and Social Care Governance Framework, which was approved by this committee in June, and also to ask endorsement for the Quality Matters Practice Quality Framework, which seeks to assure as to how quality and strength based practice is embedded across all adult health and social care services. To embed care governance as part of what we do, our approach to continuous improvement, an annual cycle of reporting and assurances proposed to committee today and the annual cycle is set out in appendix one for approval by committee. In addition to this, we're also seeking endorsement of the Practice Quality Framework Quality Matters. This follows approval of the Performance and Outcomes Framework in June, which set out our framework for managing performance in adult social care. And the two quality frameworks that we set out in that, in that paper included the Practice Quality Framework, which, which has been brought here today for approval. The framework sets out principles for embedding practice quality improvement standards, which enable us to benchmark for quality improvement, an annual plan and an annual cycle of business improvement planning.
Janet, are you going to add something?
Yeah, what I'm going to add is if you look on page four of the Quality Matters document, I'm going to go through some of the practical steps we're taking to make sure that, that we embed quality and I thought we thought it was a good way to look at it is actually have a, think about what practically we're going to do on the ground. So if you look at that list, we start off with case file audits and actually we've got a plan at the moment. We want to do regular case file audits, it's not something that we've been marvelously successful at doing, they've happened, they've stopped, they've happened, they've stopped. So what we're doing at the moment is doing a big piece of work about what that should be, what they should look like, what they should cover. And in order to get to a point where we've got clear themes around that, we've got a, a team are going to be working with us on some of our longest outstanding reviews and what we're going to do is get that team to spend their first fortnight with us doing case file audits, so we'll really blitz what we're doing and that will give us some really clear information so we know what our case file audits in business as usual will, will be. So I think that will be really positive. We're also hoping in terms of that work they will do, they'll, they'll help us tidy up our systems and make sure that things are up to date and in particular that things are recorded in the right place, because one of the things we've realised, although it's not absolutely new, our Liquid Logic system, that there's been a lack of clarity for people about where they record what. So do you assume because someone's not put it in the right place, that it doesn't count, it doesn't exist, although they've put it somewhere else? So what we're doing is a piece of work around making sure that's right, that, that people actually have some instruction about that. It's a fine line we tread between allowing professionals to be professionals and giving instructions about what they do, but I think in this respect, we need to be clear, because if we're case file auditing, it's no point if everyone's putting everything in the wrong place. So I've got a, a parallel piece of work going on around, around that. So that's happening as we speak. We talk about citizen care and stakeholder engagement, we have a, a new, very good new member of staff called Kate Damerall, who is working with us around citizens' involvement. And I think what we've done is we've had a really loyal band of, of people who've linked to our service, who, who, who meet and meet regularly and put a lot of their time in. But I think what we realise is, is actually what we might be better doing is looking at projects rather than a constant meeting that, that is the place things go. So Kate's working on a model that will help us with that and make sure they're having the right engagement with the right people, because all the subjects we deal with are different and you might want a different group of people in there, so that's work that's currently undergoing. We talk about a workforce engagement programme and actually what I would say is since Alexis has arrived, we've had much more engagement with our workforce, we've had very regular meetings, we always had meetings with our management team, but now it is the whole workforce. I know some of the members here have attended some of those events, so that is something that's, you know, it's in this document, but we're already up and running with that and I think gets incredibly good attendance and I think people really appreciate it. Customer satisfaction complaints and compliments, I'm a big fan of a complaint and I've, I've sort of made a bit of a thing about trying to take a lead around this, because I think complaints are really important, that, that if we, we need to get, deal with complaints properly and we need to learn from complaints. So I'm currently working with, we've got again a member of staff who's working solely on complaints and helping us make sure that's in order and interestingly, she's, she's working with our social care complaints department a couple of days a week, so we've got a real tie up there. So basically, we've got a system now of looking at, at things like complaints, things like domestic homicide reviews, things that go to the coroner's court, safeguarding adult reviews, any of, of those sort of things where there are, sometimes there are action plans, sometimes there are pieces of learning. So we're, we're working very hard to pull that together and make sure that we, we act on whatever we, we find. It's not always easy and I think one of the things I want to focus on is instead of looking at individual actions, that we look at themes. So I'll give you an example, in some of the safeguarding adults review, there's been a theme around carers, unpaid carers. Well, we don't need an action in six safeguarding adult reviews about, we need one that says this is something we need to focus on and how we need to focus on it. We're talking a lot at the moment, I, I mean, we, we use the term masterclasses. One of the difficulties for staff is having the time to, to move away from their desk or from their visits and undertake any sort of training and development activities. We're currently putting together a programme of what we're, you know, maybe overly ambitiously calling masterclasses, but that will cover certain areas and actually I find myself in meetings now thinking, oh, that would work. There's a example, there's a new process in the NHS instead of DNA CPR, so it's an end of life thing and immediately I'm thinking that would be an hours masterclass, that would be the way we'd get it out to staff. But what we also want to do additionally is, is record, because we'll do these things virtually by and large, we can record that material and we can have it on our system, ELMA it's called, where people go for case advice and help, so we can have all that there, so if someone hasn't managed to go, they can go and do that. So I feel very positive about that. We talk about benchmarking and, and all the time, we do look at what other areas are doing. I'm, in, in terms of my role, I, I'm also the principal social worker, which is a role we're required to have under the CARE Act, so I'm, I'm talking to principal social worker colleagues across the region and checking, you know, what are they doing about this and what are they doing about that? And I know others of my colleagues look at, you know, more data based stuff to make sure that we're on track with things. Practiced, I mean, I've talked about practice development, that's really the links to the masterclasses. I don't think there's anything else I particularly need to pick up separately, because I think I've covered it unless people have any questions.
Thank you so much Liam and Janet, I always like to listen to your stories Janet. So basically what we're saying is they're going, we're going to become more efficient by rationalising, in particular record keeping and training for staff to make sure that basically everybody knows what they're doing and where to find the information. Could you just for people out there explain what Liquid Logic is?
Liquid Logic is, is the system that, that covers everyone that we're working with. So if someone contacts us today through first contact and is requesting help, a record will be created on Liquid Logic and then that will stick with them all the way through. It, it's quite a complicated system and, you know, I started doing a piece of work the other day and actually had to get help, because I thought, actually I don't know where to check that. And Liam's a bit of a star in it now, having had access for the last few weeks, he can find stuff and none of the rest of us can. But yeah, so it's the, it's what contains the whole of the record and we'll also link to any carers, any other family members, so it, it's, it's absolutely our thing and what we need and without it, we wouldn't be able to operate.
George wants to ask a question.
Thank you Janet, and thank you both for that report. I think really interesting and Janet, the way you went into the, the number of things and the number of ways which we're looking to work, particularly with our staff teams to find, you know, I think what's a really good ways of assessing and informing the standards that we, that are laid out here is really, really positive. And also the, the citizen engagement work which is happening here and actually relevant number of things we've got today and, and things we're doing, I think is, is, is really, really valuable and I want to put on record the, you know, the hard work that a number of citizens who, you know, whether it be experts experienced, people that take part in various forms of stakeholder panels and helps in other ways, you know, the time and effort they put in is really valuable and actually it is intrinsically linked to the kind of quality work. But I want to go beyond that and it's something that's been of interest for me for a while is how, how do we and how can we use surveys or wider, you know, wider engagement than you would get in S.A.C. group with, with, with social care recipients and their families to measure quality on people's own terms? Because what I'm aware of as larger organisations like the council, we're quite used to asking our questions of people about what, what matters to them and how we're doing, but how can we make sure that the kind, as we further develop these things, which I, and I fully endorse this paper to be signed off today, how can we ensure that actually we're measuring what matters to people who receive our services and their families, not just what we think is the, the important points? Thank you.
I think we've got one, definitely one piece of very positive work around that at the moment and our, our state, our short term intervention team have a method of doing that. And I think what we need to do, because, because they're concentrated, because they work with people for a fairly short period, they've developed a method of doing and I think what we've got to do is look at where they're having success and try and build on that. I, I think that's where I'd go, start where we're doing it well. But I guess that it, it's one of those areas that, you know, we need to look at, at other people in the region and say, have you got a good method of doing this? Is there something you can teach us, where's doing this particularly well? So I think that's definitely something we could learn from others, but I know we've got that positive piece of practice in Sti and that would be my starting point.
Just coming on that one, I think it's, it's an interesting thing, we've, we've been thinking about that over the last couple of months in terms of the, the different ways beyond just practice quality, but, but how we can, how we can be assured that we're involving people in the right way in order that we get a, a full understanding of how we are performing as a, as our social care service and what the experience of people is. And I think the first thing to say is that we, we, we have historically relied heavily on surveys like the ASCO survey that, that provide outcome information. Since our vision and strategy was approved by the Co-op Exec in March, that, that set out our, our vision, our outcomes and a series of I statements. And in the last two weeks, we've launched a large survey to, to gather baseline information about how people feel about their experience and the outcomes they've been achieving in relation to that vision and strategy. So now we are collecting baseline data against which we will be able to measure our, our achievement towards the delivery of our, our vision. And we're also looking at a sort of a slightly more granular level about, you know, how, how did people feel about service X or service Y? They've, they've, they've had an interaction with the city council either through first contact or a different council team, maybe financial assessments or whatever, how did it go? So kind of low level, was it good for you, did it work for you, et cetera, et cetera. We also have other tiers of involvement, like the way we routinely work with people in stakeholder groups. But I think the other exciting bit that we're, we're looking to get into as we embed the, the governance framework- the governance framework and the performance and outcomes framework that we talked about in June at this committee is challenging staff through our performance conversations, frontline staff, challenging them around how how they understand the experience of the people that they're dealing with. So what can they do in their interactions, their conversations with people? And how can they follow up with with people on the frontline? And so that they they can be assured that they have a good understanding of the service, the impact that they're making on the lives of the people we're supporting.
Thanks, I have Ruth.
Thank you. Really interesting report this. I'm looking at the practice quality standards page, which I find really intriguing. Fifty I statements which lay out, I guess, expectations and in, but in a really positive way. I see it a really positive way for practitioners to to work to the best of their own ability and provide the best possible service to people. I mean, I think these statements are excellent, but there are fifty of them. I think that's quite daunting in a way. And I just wonder how how practitioners are supported to fulfil these statements to the best of their own ability? And how easy is it for practitioners to sort of engage with self monitoring against these standards? And how are they supported to reach out for some for more for more training or support if they need it? So how does that actually work out in practice?
I think in practice, that those standards are sort of a top layer. And there's some of the stuff I'm talking about, you know, the stuff on Liquid Logic, the masterclasses, all those bits of the layer underneath. And I think that's the bit we've got to be working on. Because in one sense, you might say, yeah, the practice standards are fine, there's nothing offensive in them as, you know, they're they're positive. But I think you're absolutely right. We've got to then work on what's the the next level underneath. And I think where our focus needs to be with that is on our team managers. So I think first and foremost, we need to support and develop our team managers in order to ensure that they're supporting the staff. But I think some things, you know, it might sound a very dull thing, but making people, making sure people record properly and in the right place, support some of this because it gets people thinking. We've been really clear with the practice quality standards, that they can be used in in different contexts. And I've talked about complaints. And I think one of the things we can do in terms of complaints is actually can, I could imagine having a discussion with someone about a complaint and going through some, they won't all be relevant to everything. And I guess that's the one reassurance, there are a lot of things on that that page. But but did we deal with this in a timely way? Were we person centred, et cetera? So I think they they help the conversation. But I think there is a layer underneath that we have to assist. And as I say, that that will come in our 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 plans around development. And particularly, I mean, we're looking at taking a coaching approach. We're really keen to have a coaching approach for people and and being positive in terms of how we manage staff. As I say, the the issue for me is I think we tread a fine line between giving out instructions and allowing people to work as professionals. And I think that's the balance we've got to find. I think it's been too much in one direction, if I'm honest. I think it's been about, right, we'll tell you what you've got to do here. And I think we need a line. But I think we're only able to do that if we put in that that structure beneath that makes some things a bit clearer for people. So I think it's a big job. I don't think it's going to happen in 10 minutes, but but we're up for it.
Thanks Janet. I am going to be strict, as I said, and I'm going to move us on the recommendations. But before that, I just wanted to mention to staff that if you want to visit or want to take part on one of the online meetings with staff, they are really worth attending. And staff are really, really pleased when we take an interest. I think they feel supported. I'm not going to put you on the on the mailing list, but if you want to know when they're happening, if you just drop me and Alexis maybe an email and then you can get the invitation. And you don't, we don't clog your email emails with lots of meetings that you don't need to attend. If that is okay. So there are four recommendations that come with this report. I'm going to take them in order, if that is okay. And then we can hopefully move very quickly. So the first recommendation is the committee knows the progress made in relation to implementing the adult social care governance framework approved at committee on the fifteenth of June, 2022. Are happy, are people happy to note that? Is everybody happy with that, yeah? Brilliant. The second recommendation is approve the annual cycle of care governance assurance reporting to the committee. Are people happy with to approve that? Brilliant. The third recommendation, approve the adult social care quality matter practice framework. You're making decisions, colleagues. Brilliant. And recommendation number four is request the director of adult health and social care reviews and refreshes the quality matter practice framework on a three yearly cycle and subsequent consideration by the committee. Are we happy with that? Brilliant. We're moving on to item 10, approve the adult care and DAS local account 2122 and DAS assurance. And I believe it's Liam and is Jonathan here?
Jonathan's not here today, Chair, I'll call for him. Thank you. So the purpose of this report is to approve the publication of the Sheffield Local Account for 2122. A local account is a tool used nationally by local authorities. It's a public document reporting on the performance of adult social care for their local authority area. The proposal is for the Sheffield Local Account 2122 to be published online on the Sheffield City Council website with accessible print and audio versions available. To develop this local account, views were sought from a citizens representative group. And a review of our performance was carried out to consider our progress in relation to outcomes set out in our adult social care vision and strategy. We've also undertaken, we've participated in and taken a benchmarking exercise with regional local authorities to promote a consistent approach to local accounts across the region. This, the format of this year's local account is a change in approach from previous years based on the feedback we've had, moving away from a focus on statistical data and a clearer focus on the services that we offer, people's experiences and our adult social care vision and strategy. Performance data will continue to be reported and available. But the primarily, the primary interest for this will be improving engagement providing the information that people, providing the information to people that people say is important to them.
Great, thank you. And thank you, it's a really good document. And it looks like visually very good as well as being very interesting. Are there any questions or comments, George?
I just want to make a a brief comment, which is thank you for this and to those, I know a number of people worked quite hard on this, both in terms of the content, but also making sure it's presented in a really, really, a really good way. Because what I think you find in a document like this, both on the performance side and the and the narrative, is that it contains a lot of information which is brought together, is available on other places, but is it brought together in a single place? And I would just really say, because we've got opportunity in public to say this, that if people want to know the kind of breadth and the scale of interventions we make as a as a service, it's a really good document to read because it's an easy read. And it gives you an idea of the challenges that we face. So I think that that's the most important thing. What I would say about ask about going forward with this document is how often do we have to publish a document such as this? And what kind of, and what kind of options and choices do we have about the frequency and the style of the document in terms of the way we publish this? Because I understand it is something that every authority needs to publish.
So we're encouraged to publish a document of this sort annually. The purpose of the report, it's part of the the current regulatory regime and sector led improvement. So it's important to be honest in this document about the challenges we're facing, our intentions and our performance. But the the scope, the design of the document is is open ended. And as long as it serves its purpose in in being part of that, that has been part of a regulatory tool and in enabling people to understand more about adult social care, then we've got a lot of flexibility in how we best do that.
I also maybe just add into this one is that what's really important from the local account is also accessible to individuals. And one of the key things from this is that a subject approval today is we'll also give a one page summary as well as an audio version and take that forward as well. So it really supports it to be as accessible as possible because it gives that breadth of what we do across adult social care. But also in terms of, you know, one of the key things for me, it was really important to start off today was to thank you about actually what adult social care does and what we do, you know, to all our wonderful staff across the the city. And what this really highlights is actually the impact of all that activity on people as we go forward. And that's really ultimately what matters. And again, but what we want to make sure is as accessible as possible for a range of people. And it's really the, although this is an annual document, one of the things I mentioned the other one is what we also look to bring back now is quarterly reporting in terms of our performance to committee as well. So we could, we have the ongoing governance oversight by committee about how we are delivering upon that impact and that quality of services.
Excellent. Ruth and then Steve.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment because I think there's an opportunity for, you know, if members of policy committee have thoughts about how the local account document can be as Liam says, it's designed to be and George, that that'd be more readable to, you know, users of the service. And I think there is a role for members to, you know, bring forward ideas on how it might be promoted, you know, how it might be improved over the years, I guess.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think it would, you know, now that we have it, when, as a committee, we can look at whether we want to change the format or the information, some of the information. But yeah, it would be good to look at it cross party as well. Be great. Ruth.
Thanks. Just wanted to ask about the the citizens representative group where views were sought. I just wondered about the size of that group and how how suitable participants were identified and how they were invited to the group. So how wide a pool was was drawn on for that?
Thanks. So the the group was a relatively small case stakeholder group brought together specifically to look at the the previous local accounts and what was in, what was of interest. We've got, I think there was around 20 individuals that contributed in the end. And I've got the feedback from that group and what was interested. But I don't have Ruth, how we pulled that together. So I'd have to get back to you on that separately, I'm afraid.
Might you look to broadening the scope of that group in the future? Are you happy that 20 people is, I don't mean to sound, I don't, you know, I don't mean this as a criticism, I don't know the situation, but is 20 a good representation or would you seek to widen that somehow?
What I'd want to see in future is that the local account is part of our performance management framework and our new governance framework. So as as we came here with the last item to talk about, that the the building out of the the governance framework with the practice quality framework. So we're looking at different means of engagement through the surveys I spoke about in relation to the last item, through citizens involvement panels and how we can bring people in to look at our data with us and provide insight into that data and meaning into that data through either the performance clinics or other fora. So what I would like to see is that the the local account in future is a product of those combined conversations and an evolution of a document over time with the involvement of citizens.
Thank you. Can I draw us to the recommendation in for this report is to approve the document Sheffield Local Account 2122 for publication online? Is everybody happy with that? Are we approving that? Brilliant. Go ahead. And we move on to item 11, endorse progress with changing future delivery plan, committing one sixth of the adult social care strategy. I believe Joe is presenting. Thank you, Joe.
So yes, the report that I want to give you a high level summary of today is to update you on the progress of Sheffield's Changing Futures Programme. And the the huge amount of progress that we have already made and how this contributes to commitment two and three of the adult social care strategy and to the development of the new operating model for social care and our approach to safeguarding. The Changing Futures Programme is funded by what is now the Department of Leveling Up Housing and Communities and National Lottery Fund. The programme was awarded 3.3 million over three years in July 2021 on the back of a successful bid from the city. And it was fully underway by autumn of 2021, so a really speedy setup. The the programme itself is aimed at improving the lives of adults who are facing multiple disadvantages and the systems and the services that support them. So it has two key aims really, to provide direct and intensive support, coordinated support to the highly vulnerable people who have multiple challenges and issues that they face and who perhaps we have struggled historically through our regular service delivery to to support intensively and for long enough for them to to remain stable. The second aim of the programme is actually to change the way our systems work. Not just our council systems, our care systems, our housing systems, but also more broadly the way that we think about the support for these most vulnerable people across the city. So this means working really closely. In fact, we're partnering with a wide range of voluntary sector organisations and we have representation from health and housing as well. In Sheffield, just to give you an idea of the scale, we have around, we have an estimate of around 200 people who fit that description of vulnerable adults facing multiple disadvantage. And and that that definition actually is that they need support in three or more of the following areas. And those are substance use, mental health, housing, criminal justice and domestic abuse. So it's a it's a relatively small cohort of people, but actually their needs are extremely intense and longstanding. And we have as a system struggled to support people. I won't go into a huge amount of detail, but I just wanted to mention that the board is chaired by Alexis and supported by myself as Director of Integrated Commissioning and by Janet Sharp as Director of Housing. The board is made up of a wide range of people from across and partners from across health, social work, housing, voluntary sector, probation, police and non statutory services around the city. And most importantly, I think for me and for Alexis and for others, is that actually, we have a number of experts by experience with lived experience who really bring the reality and the focus and the importance of the outcomes of this to bear and keep our feet firmly on the ground about, you know, the purpose of the programme. So fantastic programme and a fantastic board. The programme, as well as supporting the and feeding into the social care, health and housing governance, it also reports into the safeguarding strategic board and the drug and alcohol strategic board in order to enable the programme really to be recognised as a strategic resource across a really wide range of services. I just want to give a few of the key successes. I'm not going to go into the huge amount of detail in the appendices, but the appendices do set out the delivery plan, the statements we made and the outcomes that we described in the original bid. But early indicators are that the service has had the following impact so far. Sustained high engagement. Sustained high engagement rates, this is the holy grail really of this work. Eighty-eight per cent from a cohort of people who we have historically found really hard to support and to maintain the engagement of. We've seen increased access and engagement with other mainstream support services. So the people that we're supporting are then working and engaging with the services they need to. So this isn't just engaging with just changing futures, it's actually supporting them to engage more broadly and other mainstream support services to engage and remain engaged with them. We've seen increased and faster access to specialist provisions such as occupational therapy and clinical psychological support, which is really critical. That speed of responsiveness is absolutely fundamental to the success. And we've seen improvements in the cohort's basic needs being met, so food, healthcare and housing, the things that most of us are lucky enough to take for granted. And I think one of the things that I find particularly exciting about this programme is the system change that this is starting to demonstrate. And it's really powerful, that increase in multi-agency working to be solution-focused, to collaborate around the needs of people with really complex problems rather than operating in the best way for their own systems. So as you can tell, this is a programme that, you know, we're really passionate about. I'm really keen to bring, you know, further updates and we've suggested in the recommendations that we bring further report in six months' time. That said, if anybody would like to know more about the Changing Futures Programme or would like to meet with any of the wide range of people who are part of that programme, not just council officers, but people from the voluntary sector as well and a range of organisations, I'm sure they would be more than happy for you to come to one of their events or to meet with you and to describe things in more detail. So that recommendation is that the committee note the progress made on the delivery, endorses the Changing Futures Delivery Plan as was submitted for the successful bid and requests that Alexis and myself provide the committee with updates against the delivery plan on a six-month basis.
Thanks, Joe. I have a kind of a question myself, if that is okay. It's about, are we already, you know, this shows how, when we put the resources to something, because obviously it's a specific funding for this, how good the outcomes are. Obviously, we are halfway through with the programme, I believe. So are there already things in train in terms of how we're going to move forward when the funding ends in 2024? Because all this fantastic work, and I know people, you talked about system change, so hopefully some of that will stay. But what happens, you know, in April 2024?
Thank you. That's a very pertinent question and one which the programme team, Alexis and myself and others are very conscious of and working hard to mitigate that becoming some kind of a cliff edge. I think the key here is, as you've said, Council of Genco, is the way in which the services are coming together and are looking at how they could work more effectively in order to get better outcomes. And actually, this is a cohort of people for whom the outcomes have to date not been good until this programme, who we've struggled to support and yet which we have probably spent a disproportionate amount of resources trying to support. So really, the work we're doing at the moment around system mapping and system change with all of our partners and with the experts by experience, it's important to say, this is very, very focused on co-production with people in this cohort and people with lived experience. It's very much focused on how we design our systems better in order to be able to maintain this way of working in a way that is sustainable. And really, when you look, you take a step back and you look at this and you think about Ministry of Justice as well and the cost for the police as well, then really the business case for this should write itself. What we're doing is that kind of test of change in order to demonstrate that across the system in order to make that sustained change.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you very much. I have Mary and then Steve wants to comment.
Yeah, thank you. Really good work, obviously, you know, very intensive and lots of evidence-based input going into there. But I just wondered, because these are very vulnerable people, but by nature may be very chaotic, how about communities who are a big stakeholder in this, in this work, if you like, but never get consulted particularly and ends up particularly on a path of politicians' casework in our inbox? How does that, how do you work with those communities who may be impacted by these vulnerable people who are on this programme? And who are maybe not yet on this programme?
Thank you. Yes, there are, so first of all, there is a link into the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee from a member perspective, Dawn Shaw and Lorraine Wood are involved in the governance and the partnership working activity. So there is that link through with Lorraine as Head of Communities. I should say that's part of the reason and part of the rationale for that level of engagement with our voluntary sector is that very often they are in and of and representing our communities, our diverse communities. In terms of that, your challenge around communities, I think that's a really helpful challenge and it's one that I will take back to the programme board and which, we have an event coming up in the next couple of weeks and I will pick it up ahead of that event and ask whether we could look at that as part of the event. If I'm very happy to send the details of that to people if they would like to be involved. I think it's a fair challenge. I think we do have community policing, senior police representation, and they do bring a view from, you know, the implications of some of the chaotic and complex behaviours that are, as you say, that impact on communities as well as on that individual and their families.
I don't think enough work is being done with communities and if you want people to be successful, that work needs to be done because people are living next door in the same street. And I don't think that workers and all the agencies, you've said, get down to that level.
Thanks.
Thank you. I will take that back to the programme team and perhaps we can provide detail to members ahead of the next committee and we can bring that back in our six-month review as well.
Yes. And will you copy Mary Lee in, because she's not normally on this committee? I mean, she's a subsidiary, so she should be on the list. I will take Stephen George and then I will close it, if that is okay.
Yes, I really welcome the progress that's been made on this programme. And so recommend, support the recommendations, ask members to really support these. And I think it's a model that has made a lot of progress and I think it's one that can be transferred across the, you know, across the services, well, across adult social care. And I'm really enthusiastic about this programme and the way it's come on. And I think that we do need to have more updates, you know, as it progresses and any sort of hitches or that, you know, want to know about as well, I think, if we're looking at that. I think that, well, Georgia's yet to speak, but I think we all, the two co-chairs themselves, the whole heart of us support the work that's, that progress we've made.
Joe, do you want to come in?
Yes, just really quickly, I think, thank you very much and I will make sure that that's fed back to the team. The point you make, I think, about some of the learning and how we might transfer this learning is a really pertinent one. And I should say that the learning from the Changing Futures Programme is being brought into and understood in the context of our corporate early intervention prevention programme, which is looking at how, what the council's overall approach to intervening early effectively and preventing as far as possible the need for more acute services. So, you know, the learning from this is both feeding into the services immediately around this cohort, but it is also feeding into our wider understanding and our work on developing a council approach to early intervention and prevention. So thank you.
George?
Thank you. I endorse what everyone else said about this work and it looks like lots of really positive things are happening now, which is really, really positive. I just want to ask a very quick question really, which is, I know an element which led in the report of this is seeking to collate and find information about service activities for people. And I think as councillors, when we see that kind of activity, that kind of work going on in any project, it's obviously positive because, you know, gaining information about what's happening in the community is really important. But also I'm aware that there's a risk of duplication of these processes because it's not the first time that a project commissioned by the council, someone else has undertaken this kind of project. I just wondered, is the way that information is being collected and synthesised very specific to the, are there eight people you've got working with here or the 200 people in this cohort? Or can that information, the way it's presented, be used by other services or people outside of the council? Thank you.
Absolutely. So this is, I think of this as an example of action research, if you like. And we have commissioned and partnered with research organisations and we are working, one of the rationales for ensuring that this was a partnership with a range of stakeholders is that actually the learning therefore should be, should be something that all of those partners can interrogate, can take away, that will be meaningful and we will have a common language and a common system mapping and a common set of data and impact analysis that we can use across the system. And absolutely, the involvement of myself and Alexis, the Director of Housing, Janet, plus colleagues, other colleagues on some of the working groups, mean that we are extracting that essential data and that information about how systems work and how systems learn about how they work. I think that sounds a bit convoluted, but a lot of the learning here is about how we can learn as a system. It's double-loop learning, if you like, and I think that is one of the key benefits of it.
Thanks, Joe, and thank you to the team. So the recommendations from this report, endorse progress made with the delivery of the Changing Futures Programme. Are people happy with noting the report endorsed the Changing Future Delivery Plan? Thank you. And request the Director of Adult Health and Social Care provides the committee with updates on progress against the delivery plan on a six-monthly basis. Great. Sarah, would you be able to add that to the work programme so that we know that it's coming back in six months? Thank you. Brilliant. Brilliant. Thank you. Item 12. It's Approval of Technology-Enabled Care Contract Extension and Strategy. And Paul is presenting this report. Thanks, Paul.
Good morning, everybody. The Technology-Enabled Care Report actually recommends that the committee actually note the 12-month extension to the Technology-Enabled Care Monitoring Service that's currently delivered by Tonsill Telehealthcare, outlined in the report, which is authorised by the Director of Adult Social Care. And that extension comes into effect from the beginning of September 2023. It also recommends that the committee endorse the Technology-Enabled Care Market Position Statement as a key indicator to the market of our intentions going forwards. Technology-enabled care is going, it's evolving at a rapid pace. It presents some significant opportunities to do things a lot different and to be smarter at what we do across a whole raft of areas, including adults, children's, health and housing. So it's very much a joint endeavour. There is going to be a key step change by 2025, which will see the analogue lines, telephone lines replaced by digital, which will really be a key step change. And Citywide Carillon colleagues are currently leading on that development. We currently support 8,200 people across the city who are able to benefit from technology-enabled care. And we have a significant opportunity to build on the solid operational infrastructure that we have in place with Citywide Carillons and our Tonsill Healthcare Monitoring Services, so a good foundation on which to build. The transformation of technology-enabled care with the new digital capability, it is already transforming the way health and social care is delivered. It moves us from services that are reactive to being able to be far more proactive in our approaches. And it helps to predict and prevent incidents such as falls. So it has some really good outcomes for the citizens of Sheffield. We've done a lot of work in the last two years. We've done a lot of work with tech learning webinars. And that's really targeting our health and social care professionals on the front line to improve their knowledge and confidence and understanding of technology-enabled care. We've also included members in those sessions, which I think have been really useful in terms of improving the awareness. And we've also got an open invitation for members to attend Citywide Carillons, which we've had quite a good take for, so we can get a greater understanding. We've done a lot of work with the Happiness Programme and that was showcased recently at the launch of our new Adult Social Care Strategy, Living Life, You Want to Live, with some really positive stories of difference. And we continue to deploy that technology across daycare, extra care, dementia cafes, et cetera, in the city. We're doing a test of change as part of our Care and Wellbeing Service, looking at moving to virtual home care, which is an exciting development in home care at the moment because we have some real challenges around capacity. And we also complement our strength-based approach in having least intrusive care in people's homes. There's also a key environmental benefit there. There's potentially 200,000 visits per year that could be delivered virtually without the cost of travel to people's homes. But it very much complements those physical deliveries in people's houses around personal care. How does tech contribute? It has a significant contribution to our new strategy. It really is around commitment too. It helps to operationalise the strategy. We also see tech as a key enabler to our new adult social care operating model. And that will allow us to be more effective and efficient in our service delivery. Equally, the new Care and Wellbeing Service provides an ideal service foundation for tech. We've had a really strong response from the market to our recent invitation to tender and that will give us an ideal platform on which to build. The tech also aligns and supports the development in relation to our equipment and adaptation services at the same time. So it's a real key enabler in many different areas. We've included the market position statement in the document and that, I think, gives people a useful understanding of what tech is, an overview of the current tech market across the UK, what we're really trying to achieve from tech-enabled care and more importantly, how we will achieve it. One of the key things we want to do from the extra time we've built with the extension to the current tech monitoring service contract is we want to develop a jointly-commissioned tech service across health, housing and social care. And we want to deliver that through a new tech strategy, which will really focus heavily on the equipment we deploy in people's homes. And it will also link to a wider digital care strategy, which will focus on the day-to-day operational delivery. So exciting times ahead for tech, but we just need some time to make sure we can really bed in the new Care and Wellbeing Service first. So we've got a good platform on which to build. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul. And I can confirm that myself, George and Steve attended the City Care Alarms site on Monday, and it was really a great visit. There was so much passion, both from the manager and the staff. It was really impressive, and it really gave us a flavour of what happens and, you know, how our staff helped people practically, and how they helped enable people to still leave a home and be quite independent, but have that kind of safety net if they needed. Also, it was extremely green, as eight out of 10 vehicles were electric to a hybrid. And also, there was a lot of reusing, repurposing and recycling of equipment. So, equipment wasn't just discarded, but was, you know, repurposed, reused. And the staff, I also was the guinea pig for a fall. So, yeah, it was great to see the equipment actually being used. It was fantastic. So, thank you for that. Are there any questions, comments? Ruth?
Thank you. Fascinating. It all sounds very exciting. I've got a question about how the voluntary sector might sort of plug into all of this in the future as it goes forward. So, obviously, the money is in the corporate sector. And how does that extend into the voluntary sector where they don't have the resources to build this kind of thing themselves? So, I mean, working on an assumption that what we deliver as an authority and what is delivered on a community grassroots basis should be as integrated as possible. How can that work?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Due to me with Joe Horrigan to look at the whole purpose of embedding tech in the voluntary sector, we're working very closely with Theresa and Steve at Age UK. They're actually a hub for us, and they're looking after four of the happiness projectors for the Happiness Programme, and that's part of the appendix. So, we see that voluntary sector has been absolutely crucial. We also see tech being crucial for self-care, you know, for early intervention to kind of delay or prevent people from coming into adult social care. So, we're doing a lot of work, looking at our information advice service so that we can really communicate that positively to customers as well.
Kevin?
Thanks, Jo. It was just a comment on the Happiness Programme, to be honest. I looked at it last night. I watched the videos, and I thought it was just brilliant. And the impact, which was the main factor, and obviously, you've got some figures, there's some figures in that document that, if you like, details, if you like, the savings. Are those our figures? They're not generic happiness figures?
Some of them are generic, but some are more specific to what we've done. But between now and the end of March, with the new model we've developed for the Happiness Programme, we are increasingly getting underneath the return on investment from things like force prevention, reduction in medication in terms of PRNs. And it's just been, yeah, it's been a really great piece of work, the Happiness Programme, something that I've been really passionate about because it's close to my home, because my mum passed with Alzheimer's this year. And it's just great to see people come out with darkness and connect for the first time. But you have to put a caveat on it. It's putting, technology is always an enabler, and it's putting that tool into the right person's hands to really get the best out of it. Brilliant.
Thank you. So, the recommendations from this report are note the 12-month extension to the current technology-enabled care monitoring service contract, as outlined in the report, which is authorised by the Director of Adult Health and Social Care. Are people happy with that? So, it's a decision that has already been made. We just note in it. And then approve the Technology-enabled Care Market Position Statement as a key indicator to the market of our intentions. People happy to approve that? Everybody? Brilliant. Thank you, Paul, and the team. Item 13, approve adaptation, housing and health update.
Good morning. I'm Jo Pass. I'm the interim director, Assistant Director for the Living and Aging Wellbeing Service. And with me is my colleague, Di Green, who is the Service Manager for the Adaptations Housing and Health Service. Anybody who's seen the Happiness video will know that this is quite a hard act to follow, so we'll do our best. The Adaptations Housing and Health Service consists of three components: the Equipment and Adaptation Service, the Disabled Facilities Grant and the Health and Housing Team. It's fair to say that this service emerged from the pandemic, facing a number of challenges. We're receiving 5,500 applications, which was a 22% increase on pre-pandemic levels, and that increase in demand has been maintained. And at the point of coming through the pandemic, we had over 2,900 people waiting 18 months for an Equipment and Adaptations assessment. This paper seeks council endorsement for the investment made in the recovery plan that was initially agreed in August 21. To support you with this decision, the paper we have for you today details how we have utilised this investment to facilitate the recovery of the Equipment and Adaptation Service. We will bring at a future date a paper detailing the recovery plan for the Disabled Facilities Grant. Di will now talk through how we've utilised the service, the impacts it's made, and our delivery plan and aspirations for the future.
Thanks, Jo, and hello, everybody. I'm Di Green. I'm the Service Manager for the Adaptations Health and Housing Services. And as Jo says, we're three distinct services that fit together really well around the person to try and enable them to remain independent, safe and well at home. Emerging from the pandemic, I can honestly say that we were in a powerless position. The support and help that we've got from the Investors Save for additional occupational therapists and additional occupational therapy managers has meant that we've been able to recover our position for the people of Sheffield, from a position where we were at, people were waiting for 18 months for an assessment, and we were unable to deliver any kind of support in that period. We've recovered from that, and we're now at a stage where we can see people within six months. That's a fantastic improvement. However, it's not good enough. And what we need to talk about here, really, is the delivery plan to get to the stage, hopefully by April, May next year, where we are actually at our target of seeing people within six weeks. That's not urgent, that's not the urgent people that we need to get out of hospital, which we have a target to see within 48 hours. And we are delivering on that target at the moment. These are people who are waiting for handrails at the front door. They're waiting for an assessment for bathing so they can have a wash. They're waiting to be able to get a stair lift so they can go up the stairs. The basic things that people need in order to live independently. So, we don't have to progress people through to needing packages of care, or potentially needing less packages of care, smaller packages of care. So, we're on the way to doing that. And this money has helped us to do that. I think it's also worth saying, as Jo said, that we've got significant pressures on the Disabled Facilities Grants service. We've got significant people waiting for the service to be delivered once they've had the assessment of their need by an occupational therapist. However, we're also addressing those issues. We're looking at the criteria that we work with within Equipment and Adaptations, and we're going to bring a further paper in December regarding that. And we're also looking at the criteria for delivery of the Disabled Facilities Grant, because we're very aware of the pressures that are put on people actually getting the adaptations that they need once we've done the occupational therapy assessment. So, I think in conclusion, for me, it's exciting times. We're doing some great work. The team are all pulling together. I know that Councillor Iris and Councillor Argent are going to come to us on Friday to meet with the team. But I want to extend that opportunity to all councillors who want to come and meet with the teams and see the work we do. We can potentially go out and see the people that we're assessing and delivering the service to as well. So, do you want to do the conclusion, Jo?
I think what I just want to say is when you think about prevention, and when you think about promoting independence, occupational therapists, that's their absolute bread and butter. And there's been a huge amount of energy to get into this recovery plan and get us to that place where they are delivering what they are absolutely passionate about, which is responding to people as early as possible, at least within six weeks, so that we can kind of nip things in the bud as much as we possibly can to prevent any further deterioration and to enable people to get on living their lives as independently as possible. Any questions?
Are there any questions? I just, George, go for it.
Thank you. And thank you both for that. And it's obviously really good news to see about the direction that we're going in in terms of a number of things, particularly how long people have to wait for the planned works. I'd wonder to ask about, I mean, it was, I suppose it would be, you know, it's obviously good news, and especially our colleagues in health, that those urgent works can be done much faster, I think, within 48 hours, the response is said. Could you tell us what kind of interventions can be made in that more short, urgent time space in order to help with discharge? Because presumably, it's a bit different to the kind of interventions that can be made under the planned works. Thank you.
It is. And thank you for that question. I mean, the interventions that we do in terms of hospital discharge, we've got a dedicated worker within the hospital, within the Health and Housing Service, and what her remit is to work with hospital discharge teams, but also colleagues within the hospital to enable people to be discharged to accommodation to suit their needs. So, typically, you'll have a, go into hospital and have a life-changing experience that affects your mobility, and you can't go home. So, what that officer will do is find alternative accommodation with an OT check included in that to ensure that that accommodation is suitable for somebody's medical needs. And typically, we can do that within a week to 10 days. Typically, people are discharged from hospital to a one-room existence with strip wash, which obviously isn't ideal. But with those really fast occupational therapy assessments, then we can get urgent adaptations and equipment put in place as soon as possible from the discharge from hospital to enable people to move out from that one-room existence and to be able to re-able them to live independently. It isn't always that we can deliver within 48 hours, but the aim is to do the assessment and get things in train. So, we've got a plan, and that's agreed with the person. So, we know where we're going.
Thank you so much for that report. I've got.
Are you having, when you're saying you're doing them within 48 hours, but are you experiencing a lot of difficulties getting the adaptations done? You know, how quickly are they done? So, the people can go home?
Well, I have to report that with council housing services, if somebody's a council tenant, that the adaptations are being done fairly quickly. The new contract with Waits that's administered through housing, through the asset management team, is working very well. And we have very close links with the asset management team to deliver council housing alterations and services. And similarly, it works very smoothly to rehouse people who are existing council tenants. What we're going to be working on over the next six months is to really work on our offer to people who own their own homes and have to go through the Disabled Facilities Grant team to apply for a grant that is administered on behalf of the government to fund adaptations within their own home. And also to work out with those people whether it's reasonable and feasible to adapt somebody's home, or whether we offer alternative accommodation to those people as well. So, typically, we could have a look at somewhere like Buchanan Green for an owner occupier if we are able to adapt their own home. But again, it's, we're looking at all those avenues to make sure that they're fit for purpose for the person, because we're conscious that in our delivery in the past, I don't think that we have been effective in that way. It's very difficult to claim a Disabled Facilities Grants, I think. And what we want to do is make it easier and more transparent. So, we're also having a look at the criteria for equipment and adaptation to make it absolutely clear where people go and how they claim, what they need to claim to get those adaptations delivered. And we're also looking at a much better improved web offer. So, the information is there, clearly set out for people to see, and also fellow professionals to see, which currently we don't have in place.
Thank you. And thank you for the report and the passion that always comes across whenever I speak to, we speak to the team. So, there are four recommendations from this report. Note the Adult Health and Social Care Equipment and Adaptation Performance Update. People happy to note the report? Endorse the Equipment and Adaptation Delivery Plan at Appendix Two? Yes? Endorse the Adult Health and Social Care Equipment and Adaptation Financial Recovery Action, identified in Section 32.12. And finally, request that the Director of Adult Health and Social Care provides the committee with updates on progress and outcomes in relation to the performance and financial spend on a six monthly basis. Brilliant. Sarah, would you be able to add that to the work programme as well? Thank you very much. Thank you. And we move on to item 14, approve future design of adult social care. And I believe John is presenting this. Thanks, John.
Thank you. For those who haven't met me, I'm John Brenner. I lead the Change Programme as part of Alexis's management team. There's a reporting front here. I'm going to bring you just a few highlights of it and then leave the time for discussion or for you to move on if there are no questions. We are currently, as you'll know from previous conversations, into the second year of a really ambitious kind of five-year transformation programme of Adult Social Care in Sheffield. Lots of things we want to improve, lots of things we want to make better. We are a big focus on, you know, three main things: improving outcomes for people, making sure we are fulfilling and fully fulfilling all our legal duties in the best way possible, and making a financially sustainable adult social care system. We, there's been huge amounts of work to date in developing this Change Programme. We, you know, a huge amount of listening, lots of consultation, lots of co-production, and there's a report coming next time, I believe, a bit more on that engagement and co-production approach going forward and how we expand that. We've done an awful lot of data work. We've done an awful lot of mapping, of testing proposals, and generally listening, as well as some detailed conversations around, you know, the impacts of our plans around things like qualities, climate, et cetera, that are key organisational city priorities. The kind of things that this has told us is that actually, in terms of how we want to change the system, how we want people's experience of the system to improve, is we want effectively more joined-up care, more continuity of people who are people working, more reliable systems, more focused around their outcomes and what matters to those individuals. And, you know, and in general, and more specifically, we've had a lot of feedback about moving towards more specialist situations, in particular for people with learning disabilities. towards, um, more specialist, um, situations, in particular for people with learning disabilities, autism, physical disabilities, um, where a generic model they feel has not served them well. Um, so we are, um, bringing through a series of proposals and you'll see these reflected down from the Adult Health and Social Care Strategy, which was, uh, approved in March by the Co-op Executive and the delivery plan that you yourselves approved in your inaugural, um, thing, into a change programme, which we've talked to you a little bit about before and is part of regular updates that are bringing you through. And there's one other work programme coming fairly soon, um, so you'll see me again for that. Um, and a programme that focuses on key components, so our provision, which is of course, um, for people in the adult social care, ninety-five percent of their experience in adult social care is the provision they are receiving. Um, so you'll see that in the outcome-based home care work, the strategic review of care homes, the working age adults framework, the, all of which you're hearing about. And, um, so, and those moving quite significantly towards a more outcome-based, um, approach to social care. You'll see it in the operating model, um, which is a, a fair chunk of this paper focuses on our overall operating model. You'll see that in our, um, our practice and our workforce approaches, the practice approach you've been hearing about earlier, um, today, the workforce approach, um, come, will, the more on in February, on your February, um, forward plan and overall, and putting in the safe governance around that to wrap around our, our model of, um, our, our care delivery, but also our organisational governance, our financial governance, um, et cetera. Um, so, I mean, to, to, to summarise it quickly, what difference it will make to people. The figure two, which is in two point seven of your report, I think is probably the key element of this, and that talks about the overall journey through the system and what we expect to see, um, um, through it. So we're talking about a new early intervention and prevention offer that is, I think, at an earlier stage of design than some, but we're working across the council around that. I'm sure we'll be talking to you imminently, well, I know we'll be talking to you imminently, about, um, what that might look like going forward as a joined-up prevention officer, oh, offer for adults. Um, a significantly improved online offer, which is in progress. Um, better signposting to universal help, um, better, there's been a significant amount of work around how that financial help, not just around cost of living, but also earlier, um, um, conversation, a better conversation about the financial implications of formal care to individuals, um, better links with other professionals and that team, um, those, that, that team that surrounds people. As we move into short-term care, so we're talking about improving, um, discharge routes and that, that work is underway in terms of the mapping and discovery work and proposals will come through here in due course. Um, the consistency of contact, uh, financial, or better online financial assessments, better use of tech and equipment, which you've heard about, um, from Di and Paul, um, today. And then a move, uh, towards more specialist teams with consistent, um, points of contact, um, far closer links with health colleagues. So for instance, for our community teams in older peoples, we know the key health contact for them is, um, their GP around, so we're, you know, aligning, um, around boundaries around primary care, um, as is our home care contract. Um, but also, um, we're talking to GP representatives in the city about testing how we work far more closely on the ground and how a more relationship-based approach with, um, them. Um, but also far bigger role and role for providers and a closer work with providers and, um, showing them the esteem that we hold them in, which is very high, but making sure that is built systematically into the way, um, our processes work, our relationships are, um, are built up, um, and online, um, a better, better online offer for people in the system as well. Um, I suppose the last thing I want to just draw, um, out is that, um, you know, there are significant improvements, we think, uh, um, in those three elements that we'll see through this, um, through these, this kind of future design. Um, we had hoped to be talking to you more about that longer-term financial implications of that, but obviously the Autumn Statement's coming out in a couple of days' time, um, I think it's Thursday, so tomorrow, um, in fact, um, will, um, you know, has significant implications for all public services, but in particular there's specific things about social care reforms and social care financing and the, um, kind of the implementation of the Health and Care Act, um, that, that will inform that significantly. And, um, of course, we'll bring the impact of that through this committee, as Ryan, I'm sure, will be, um, informing Strategy and Policy Committee and Finance up, um, about that. So that's all I wanted to say. I'd be very happy to take, um, questions now. Oh, sorry, actually, there is one more thing I was going to say. We've put in the recommendations that will bring updates on this. We'd like to do that, but we'd like to align that with the updates on the overall delivery plan, so not to busy your agenda with separate updates, but we'll align those with the delivery plan, um, which we've already committed to bring you, I think, six monthly updates from memory, um, on. So, um, assuming you'll, um, agree that recommendation, that's how we would, um, deliver it. I'm happy to take, um, questions you may have. Also happy, you know, I'm really passionate about this, I'm really happy to talk about this in terms of people's impact or how the methods are away from this, we can have briefings, we can, um, talk, uh, talk as much as you want. I'm happy to, um, spend time, um, talking about this away from them if you want to get into detail elsewhere.
Thank you, John. Within the time that I've allocated, we can talk about it. But we can always have, uh, John is often in briefing, so if other members are interested in anything in particular, next time we have some briefing, people can join, uh, those. Um, are there any questions or comments?
I just want to just say what stands out is the need for early intervention and prevention all the way down the line, you know, before we even get into adult social care. Because I'm just looking on page, um, one, five, seven, um, right, one, two, three, where you've talked about, um, demand for social care continues to rise above our comparator authorities. So something's going on in Sheffield that is making demand rise more than other areas. So, um, and, you know, obviously we're all working to try and fix that, but I just wonder if it's coherent enough. I'm not talking about adult care now, because I think you are trying to really, really do absolutely. I'm just listening to what we've talked about before about adaptations and it's absolutely crucial. Maybe not glamorous, but totally crucial and brings a great reward to those that are doing that kind of work. So, you know, that's, just wanted to make that comment. So, just well done.
Um, thank you. Um, I couldn't agree more. Um, there is work across council going on around that prevention and early intervention and we'll bring that back. I know Alexis is very influential on, um, in that space, as Joe is, who you, um, who you heard from earlier. Um, but of course preventative approaches, as you, as you self-acknowledge, go through, through right from that kind of general, universal and targeted stuff, pre-formal eligibility, but also to make sure we're focusing on independence and preventative approaches all the way through the system. And you've, you heard Janet talk about that around our practice approach, you had Di talk, you know, assistive technology, equipment, et cetera, all feeds into that, but, you know, fundamentally it's around listening to people, listening to people, what matters to people and, um, helping, you know, build that around, build, you know, that, that kind of, a system that's based around that will be more preventative throughout. But I couldn't agree more around that work, around that early intervention. We were, we are working towards it and there is work and that is increasingly being joined up.
Thank you, John. I think Alexis wants to, uh, just say a few words.
Thank you very much for, um, the question, Councilwoman Mary Lee. I think very astute question and one of the key things for me coming into Sheffield was understanding what lies behind the increase in demand. Because that was one of the core questions for me was that when we see the, and I've spoken about it in previous committees, is the demand is kind of going, going up the way, but actually the resources are going down the way. So what we, what we are trying to meet and what you hear about in the budget discussions later on is what we're always trying to meet is that gap in the middle. And for me, you know, what's really important is we come back down to, why are we here? We're here to improve the lives and outcomes for people. And, you know, the way in which we do that is by enabling people to live more independent, fulfilled lives in their communities and to do the things they want to go and live. And I've, I've been there with an elderly parent and, and with family members who actually want to live their life and do the only things that they want to go and do. And that's where things like technology, equipment adaptations could be such a simple solution, but can make a huge difference to people's lives. And, you know, and equally, the support to unpaid carers, uh, which we're coming to in December's committee could also make a difference. But for me, one of the key things that we're organising is a briefing session with members of the committee, about like we did with the recently with the Fair Cost of Care, around early intervention, enablement and rehabilitation. And we're going to talk through what does each of these things mean in practice, from targeted early support, which was, which were prevention teams and Don Battenger is actually in the, in the, the, actually who leads that is actually in the, in the committee today. And, um, to, to, to our, um, our occupational therapy, um, teams, which you held about earlier on today, right through to how we work with our community colleagues, how we work with our housing colleagues and how we crucially work with the voluntary sector in a really meaningful way and taking forward different tests of changes and different ways of working that ultimately enable people to, to be able to live that longer life at home. And so, so, so basically that's been organised for the committee. And I think to give a really, that good informal discussion and briefing to talk through about opportunities and going forward to then bring then a formal, formal paper to February's committee, the formal proposals about how we take forward that early help in adult social care, allowing to kind of wider programmes of work. So hopefully that's helpful and, uh, happy to take the discussions out with us as well.
Thanks, Alexis. And can I say that these conversations are not just happening in adult health and social care, they're happening across the council. So they're happening in public health, in fact, they're happening in the NHS, they are happening at regional level. Um, so we are all looking at how we can help people to live happily in their communities so that to reduce their need for care, healthcare, et cetera. So it's more, it's a corporate direction, um, in terms of the council, I think, that we are taking. And it's good to hear the same conversations going on.
We've got quite a way to close the gap though, but.
We do, but we need to be optimistic, Mary, because otherwise we, we, it's just not worth working, isn't it? So we, we have to, to do something, um, as well as being, um, realistic about where we are. But thank you. Um, so we're moving, I think, on to item, oh, sorry, no, the recommendations, sorry, John. Um, so there are two recommendations. One is to approve the future direction of adult social care operating model and confirm it aligns with the committee's strategic direction. Are people happy to, everybody in agreement to approve? And then, as John mentioned, uh, we will be getting month, six monthly reports, but we're going to make them coincide with the delivery plan. So it might be a bit, uh, earlier than six months for the first one back, because I think that is already timetabled sometimes.
We're integrating to the same report.
Yeah, thank you. Is everybody happy with that? We move into fifteen, which is, um, endorse Better Care Fund Adults and Update Report, Update Reporter and Delivery Plan, uh, Commitment for Six Adult Social Care Strategy. Thanks, Martin.
Thank you, um, and thank you for the opportunity to come and tell you about the Better Care Fund today and how it aligns, um, with the committee. I'm Martin Smith. I am Deputy Director of Planning and Joint Commission in a joint role across the council, um, and the ICB. And I think it's a great time to be on the agenda because the Better Care Fund is, is a culmination of all those things you've heard. Um, it is nationally mandated to have a Better Care Fund and it is owned by the Health and Wellbeing Board. The plan essentially has two policy objectives. One is around keeping people well, supporting people in their home, doing what we can with communities between health and care. Uh, and the second is focused on the high-impact change model around how we support hospital discharge, how we support people, um, to come back to, you know, the level of activity and what they could do before going home. So in terms of adult, the Adult Social Care Committee, a number of the services that you look after are in the Better Care Fund. It, it, it has, um, the DFG, the Disabled Facilities Grant, it has a lot of housing elements and it aligns to all the parts of the Adult Social Care Strategy. As I said, it, it is the national driver for bringing together health and social care and it's around, you know, dissolving the divides between health and care, looking at the governance, looking at how we make decisions, looking at population need. Um, so feeding from our joint strategic needs assessment, you know, sitting together and having committees that understand if, if health make a decision, it might have a consequence on social care, if social care make a decision. So it's around coming together to do the best, it's around listening to people. The plan that was agreed and approved was built on previous plans with lots of engagement with Health Watch, lots of the consultation that was, um, spoken about earlier with residents around I-statements. We have an outcomes framework based on what people really want. So although the plan is something we have to do, it's something we would do anyway. It's around a description of how health, care, voluntary sector, um, are focusing on carers, are focusing on hospital discharge, and it should be the plan that describes for Sheffield how we're working together to bring about the outcomes. So it kind of needs to have a golden thread through all, all the policy objectives that come out, through the Adult Social Care Strategy, through any NHS policies that will be coming out around Christmas, around objectives. It should, should marry together with those and have some real-life examples about how teams on the ground are working together. Now, in some of the appendices here we've included, and so it is quite a big paper because we've concluded the plan that we submitted that was approved by Health and Wellbeing Board. In terms of assurance, that has been assured, you know, through both the regional process and the national process as our, our plan meets the standards. And it has had significant assurance internally from scrutiny. We, we're asking today that we, just to, the committee notes what the Better Care Fund is, um, how, how it works and to bring back updates to you on a regular basis. As I said, there, there's elements of the Better Care Fund that are operational adult social care, um, and about how hospital discharge works. So there's, there's a commitment to bring back a report to the December committee around how those things are working. There's a big focus on unpaid carers in here. So again, how health and care are working with unpaid carers, with agencies, with voluntary sector organisations in Sheffield around, you know, building sustainability, building resilient communities. And in terms of where we take this, we have got permission now to include childrens. The Better Care Fund is, is mandated for adults, so it is about adults. But the Better Care Fund is just part of our integration journey. It's something we have to do for adults, but we've got the agreement to include childrens, to have that sort of cradle-to-the-grave approach around not having a gap between transitions, looking at how we commission services together between health and care and obviously all our partners, housing, health, a lot, lots of partners were involved in signing off the plan. And it is a system, a system-owned plan. It's not just the two sort of big commissioning organisations in, in the city. So that's my brief overview. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Martin. And obviously the, the report was approved from the Health and Wellbeing Board. Uh, you know, I was the chair of that, that meeting, so thank you very much. It's, uh, it's, it's a bit complicated to get your head around it when you've not, not familiar with it, but actually it makes a lot of sense once, so thank you for including the, the, all the reports and things. And there are lots of, uh, documents include, embedded on the electronic version if you want to dig further. Uh, but it is about how we work together, how we allocate resources and how we collect data. And I think we get a report every quarter, don't we? Because you have to submit the returns to the government.
That's correct. There's, in terms of the plan, the national requirements, uh, there's four national conditions. Essentially, the national conditions are to, um, agree the mandated funds that transfer over, um, in terms of what comes over to the council from health, to agree a joint plan and to have a, a plan that's approved that says how Sheffield's working together to meet the objectives of supporting people coming home. There are four indicators, um, quite high level. Two of those are Adult Social Care Outcome Framework indicators around admissions to residential care and rates of those, around the effectiveness of re-ablement. The other ones are around hospital discharge and prevented admissions for people with long-term conditions. So that's mainly about how we're looking after people with long-term conditions in the community so they don't end up in accident and emergency when they, they should have teams that are wrapped around them in terms of that Sheffield model, team around the person.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, they're off. Martin.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you for this. It's, it's good to see you. And thank you for all the reports that have been presented so far. Appreciate how a lot of work has gone into all of this and it's really good to see. Um, it's maybe a bit of a, aside, I don't know. It's, so the Better Care Fund includes funding for winter pressures and addressing winter pressures. I'm kind of conscious that this year is a bit of a strange or a challenging year with, um, cost of living crisis might be causing, um, additional adverse health with people not being able to afford heating, um, various other pressures may be exacerbated by that and then COVID still existing. And I was just wondering kind of what are the, are there any specific plans for the Better Care Fund this year in light of maybe some fairly unique circumstances for this winter? Or is that a much too low-level question?
Oh, no, that's, that's a very relevant question. In, in terms of the Better Care Fund, it's, it's almost a collective of the work that's going on. So I know there's that vulnerable group work already going on, committee set up around looking at that. And in terms of And in terms of winter funding, there is a health and care group looking at exactly that. You know, how do we support people? How do we work with the voluntary sector to make sure people have the things they really need? I went out to see a voluntary sector organisation yesterday and he was asking how can I access blankets and hot water bottles to support people? So there's things we can do immediately to help, to help, that don't need to go through. But the wider decision on funding around how much of it goes to the hospital, how much of it comes, you know, to operational teams, I suppose that is the Better Care Fund. It's about how partners come together and say, okay, what's the risk share around this? What do we do? How do we allocate this money to get the biggest impact for the residents? So it maybe doesn't answer the question necessarily, but last year was a very strange year for the Better Care Fund as well because we had a lot of public money that came in, additional money, normal current monies for Covid support, they stopped. So now it's around, you know, we've got a total budget for our place, we've got a winter allocation, we need to decide where best to allocate that money for the best outcomes.
Thank you, appreciate, that'd be really challenging.
I have Alexis and then Ruth.
So again, really great question, I think very strict question because winter pressures are something that, which is always quite a challenge for adult social care. And what that means is two things, is number one is the immediate response in terms of how we get through winter, but also the long term funding of the social care and home care support that we have once winter's over. And so the NHS to some degrees discharge people from hospital, but social care continues to work with people away in longer term. And so the Better Care Fund to some degrees deals with only one part of that. Where the recent ADAS survey was just released actually yesterday, I'm going to circulate that to committee members. And one of the key things that the ADAS survey recognised was the question was about two things. Was the long term sustainability of funding to adult social care and particularly in relation to winter pressures? And equally to the £500 million that has been promised to come to social care around to deal with both the cost of living crisis which people are facing, but also very much our providers in the city who are struggling to cope with what is a very difficult circumstances just now. So certainly ADAS has put that call out to government as to see how that £500 million will be distributed to local authorities very quickly to help us to get through winter. Because the Better Care Fund only deals with part of it. What it doesn't do really, to be honest, is deal with the kind of the longer term winter pressures. Thankfully locally, we have done a local pilot with NHS colleagues. We've got £2.4 million that was approved by the Finance Subcommittee in sixth of September for us to accept. And we are currently working through that as a test of change. And I'm going to say this publicly to the committee, but if it works well, I will be asking for that to be made permanent. I'm just going to say that to committee, for those that know me. But ultimately, I think the key thing is ultimately the, you know, I think the sustainability of funding to social care to get through winter has to be an all season approach, not just, in a sense, temporary pockets of funding. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thanks Alexis. I'm going to take Ruth's question and then we're going to move on to the next item if that is okay.
Thank you Chair, I've got just got questions about page 183, which is, I think also page 13, I'm not quite sure. It's appendix one, sorry, first page of appendix one where you've got the two tables with the figures. I'm just, I mean, I might be being a bit of a numpty on this, but this is a huge drop in the actual total under section 75. It's a forty, I make it forty four and a half percent drop in the numbers. I just wondered about the background.
It is a bit confusing, apologies. It was to try and demonstrate some of the background to it. So these are actually 21, 22 figures. So the agreed figure for the Better Care Fund is £455 million, roughly £454.8 that was approved. But this was just showing what was agreed at the Cooperative Executive on the 16th of March, which is to include the children's element. So with the table one, it's the bottom, total £418 million effectively. But there was an agreement to increase a lot of the elements and include children's in our section 75 agreement. So just trying to show the move in terms of the pool budget is significantly larger than it was previously. And now with the aspirations to have adults and childrens together agreed, so moving from sort of a £400 ish million pot to a £750 million pot with adults and children included. Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommendations from this report are note the Better Care Fund overview background and expenditure. Are members happy with that? Brilliant. Note the Better Care Fund Plan 2022/2023. And note the Better Care Fund Annual Report 2021/22. And also agree to have a report back in six months on the implementation of Better Care Fund 2022/23 and hospital discharge improvement activity. And Sarah, maybe we'll agree where the best goes, because if we have everything in six months' time there, we have another huge agenda. So it might be a little later or a little longer than six months if that is okay with you Martin, just to make you.
Absolutely fine.
Brilliant, thank you. Thank you so much for the report. And we're moving on item 16. That is endorse adult social care financial update and progress with effective user resources delivery plan. Thanks Liam. And Janet.
I might not have a lot to say, but we thought they might be useful for some items.
Thanks Chair. So this standing report provides information about our use of resources, an update on progress with our 2022/23 financial recovery plan and an update on improvements made in relation to our financial governance. So the in-year position in terms of our savings delivery, since the report to the last committee, the forecast, has decreased from £17.1 million of the savings to £15.6. And this due to two key reasons. The first being an increase in the average cost of new home care packages for people over 65. So the committee will be aware that a major challenge for us in the budget and a key cost driver is the cost of home care and particularly the higher cost packages as we seek to keep more people at home as opposed to people going into care homes. But also an effect that we've seen particularly since the Covid pandemic when people were understandably wishing to avoid care homes for infection control reasons. And the cost of high cost home care packages continues to be a challenge for us. The cost has been reducing over the last eighteen months, but is not reducing fast enough to meet the financial challenge that we have this year in relation to these particular budget savings. The second reason is an increase in the cost of existing support packages for people under the age of 65. So again, we have a focus in our budget on offsetting, limiting the growth of existing packages for people who are under the age of 65, particularly learning disabled people. And with not being able to limit the growth in those packages as we had intended. And that is in large part due to our ability to undertake the planned reviews at the scale required to get to people earlier and before demands increase. The solutions to that being very heavily linked with the proposals that John was talking through earlier about the future shape of adult social care target operating model. But with us also having mitigations in place around use of agency workforce and a workforce strategy and development. So table B in section three shows a summary of where we're at with our forecast savings. There are a number of mitigations that are also set out in section 3.1.8 to offset the forecast that has been set out earlier. Particularly on relation to some work that we're undertaking with people requiring mental health support and our joint working with health colleagues there. We've got a very successful piece of work limiting the use of direct awards in home care. Direct awards is a framework support that's been provided. And we've been leaning on direct awards over the last, or particularly over the last winter when Omicron emerged in January as a means of meeting the immediate care needs of people coming out of hospital. And we're managing that down and that is going to have a significant financial impact for us. Also avoids some vacancy costs and some additional income coming through. But those mitigations are in the forecast. The report sets out a number of further activities that are undertaken, that are being undertaken to support the achievement of the savings. Things like care package approval processes, double handed care assessment, the adaptations, housing and health item we've just heard from is obviously directly relevant to this along with controls around staffing budget and other things that are set out in section three of this report. Section four describes our effective use of resources. Appendix two provides a detailed analysis of the changes to the adult health and social care budget over the last six years and highlights that despite increases to the total budget, as we've seen, the cost pressures are in excess of the council's ability to increase funding on a year by year basis. The analysis also provides a narrative around the changing profile of the allocated budget with proportionally more of our budgets being funded from grant and other income as a symptom of the way the local authority is being funded overall. Thank you.
Shall I just come in with a few, some of the things Liam's just referred to, I think are linked to some of the things I mentioned earlier. So if we look at example, for example, the case file audits. By doing that work, that will help us, I think, understand what's happening. So in particular, there's been a rise recently, you know, that Liam's referred to around home care. Now, it's fine knowing there's been a rise, but unless you know why there's been the rise, there's nothing you can do about it. So I've got quite a detailed piece of work happening at the moment, looking at every one of those individual situations and understanding what's happened, why have we been in, why have we ended up in that situation? And are there things we can do to mitigate it? Sometimes there won't be, it might just be as it is. But as an example, I looked at one particular situation myself and it was someone at end of life, very elderly, nearly 100, who hadn't had care. But his month of care went into our forecast and then obviously tipped things over. So I think we need to do that detailed work to understand that. And that's what we're doing at the moment. The other thing I think is our approach to what we do. So we're very much trying to work in a strength based way. It's a bit gimmicky, I think the term, it's not always a useful term for people to understand. But looking at what people can put into the situation themselves, people don't want more care than they need. I don't think people do, and we disable people by doing that. So we're doing a lot of work at the moment around encouraging our staff to work in that way, providing information, you know, making that our focus. So I think that's really important. The other thing that I think is an issue for us is someone has a crisis. We put care in because it's an emergency and you need to deal with it. But what we often don't get a chance to do is go back and review that. And this is where the work that John was talking about really links in. So we're restructuring in such a way that, the way I put it, very simply is we're going to deal with people and not tasks. So at the moment, we go in, there's an issue with someone, we deal with that issue, they might get extra care to deal with that issue, we move away. What I'm going to be saying around in terms of practice guidance and standards is actually you go in, you stick with the person, you deal with the whole person and what needs to be done, and you put a review on the system. So it's a bit, you know, while I'm here, let me do everything that requires doing. So hopefully we won't get to a point where we have the lists of people outstanding who haven't been reviewed for periods. But then I think the final thing there is we have got the reviewing teams in and looking at that work. So we're hoping we'll sort of have our, we'll have fettered, I think is the word, we've got our house in order. And then the way we work forward will mean we won't end up back in that situation again. So I think that's where Liam and I work together. Liam, he knows the numbers and I know the stuff that sits behind it.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments from members? Thank you. Yes, of course.
Just about high cost of care, you mentioned this gentleman who was end of life care and you delivered. So what, just, I understand what high cost of care might be if somebody with a learning disability have got to make make sure they've got a really good life and they have direct payments or personalised care and support. When we talk about high cost of care for somebody who is elderly, it's longer protected. What, what kind of, just give me some practical examples of what that might mean, so we get our heads around that. Yeah, that particular example was an interesting one because actually that man hadn't required care before. I mean, he was in his garden a few weeks until his situation deteriorated. I think what was required for him was fairly round the clock care, a lot of care during the day, which actually should have been health funded. And so partly, part of what we did was we picked up the care because it needed doing. But on that, in that process, we were also in touch with our health colleagues. And ultimately, actually before the man died, continuing health care picked it up. So sometimes that's where the issue is in. And it's where it's difficult is where does it tip over? Where is it reasonable for someone to stay at home and have the amount of care that's required in the home? And when do you get to a point where actually you have to have the difficult conversation and say, actually residential care is the best thing? And that's an interesting one because I find a lot of families are actually pushing us towards often because it's a difficult situation to be in and it feels very unsafe a lot of the time for people. So it's managing that. But if you look at what Di was talking about, sometimes double handed care is one of my favourite things. I was involved very much in the project we did around that a number of years ago. And if you can put a situation in where the care company or the family can manage someone who would ordinarily be double handed and need two people to manage by putting the right hoist, the right sling, the right piece of equipment in, then you're basically halving the care costs. And we've got a lot of evidence and a lot of success in doing that. So some of it's getting the right eyes on the situation quickly enough to see where, you know, to stop things deteriorating. I've also got another issue with double handed care, not just in terms of the practice and the cost. But there's something very different for me, if Liam and I were looking after someone in this room, chances are Liam and I might look at each other and talk to each other. If there's just one person with another one person, I think that relationship is quite different. So there's a practicality to the cost and there's a dignity issue with me. But often it's when you're tipping into, is it nursing or is it not? I think that's when we get the high costs.
In terms of end of care, my mum had double handed cares four times a day when she was in the end of life period. And that went, I think it lasted for about three weeks for a month. Would that be considered high cost care? I was there all day long, you know, I was doing the other bits, but you know, they came out.
I think it would in terms of, yeah, what we look at. But I think the bit we don't then look at is because we, it's how long that's going to be. So I think when it happens, I think if I understand the money side of things, we then forecast that in as if it's going to be there longer term and actually often isn't there longer term. So I think we need a bit more analysis of what's going on, which is why I've got someone at the moment. We think we've got about 25 situations that I've got one of our practice development people looking at indeed. He's doing it in a lot of detail actually, which will be very helpful to us to understand what are the issues. And I'm going to use that information as well, wasn't expecting to do this, but he's doing such a good job. I'm going to be able to feed it into our case file auditing work.
Thank you. Are we happy to look at the recommendations? Yes, brilliant. So there are five with this report. Note the update to the financial forecast for the delivery of savings 2022/23. People happy to note that? Note action taken to achieve savings or mitigation of pressures. Note the updates to the financial and resource management delivery plan highlighted. And note the budget analysis provided in the user resource report in appendix two. And then in terms of the request is that we get a report basically every committee as we have done so. as we have done so far. So thank you for your work and for sticking with us until the end. And we're moving on to the last item, which is item 17. May I remind members that the appendix to this item is restricted. So if members wish to ask questions on that part of the report, we will take questions on the first part, and then if we need to go into a closed section, we will do so only if members wish to ask questions. And this is item 17, Adult Health and Social Care Budget Proposal 2022/23/24.
Thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Ryan Keewitt, I'm Council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services. So two-part report, I'll cover the first part, and if there's anything that we need to talk about on the second part, you can ask Liam to help me out with that one. What the committee's got in front of you is a short overview report on the position of the council's budget process as it stands about a month ago. So the Strategy and Resources Committee received a report that showed about £60 million of savings and income generation opportunities that have been basically identified by policy committees, not approved, but identified against a target of around £80 million. So quite an enormous amount of work done to get us to that position. And since that Strategy and Resources meeting, a lot of work has been going on with members, and I know you'll be familiar with this work because it's certainly been happening in this committee, to firm up the political acceptability, or perhaps political willingness to accept might be better, the savings proposals that have been put forward. That's the subject of the appendix to this report, where we report the savings and income generation opportunities that the three political parties are minded to support at this stage or are supporting at this stage. Strategy and Resources Committee will receive a further report from me on the 5th of December, which will set out the position, in other words, the aggregate of all the committees' green savings, the savings that members are supporting at that point in time. That won't conclude the budget process, I fear. We won't quite get there by then. As of 12th of October, we were about £20 million short. By the time we've done, I suspect we'll still be about £20 million short on the 5th of December. So there's more work to do to finish the process off, but nonetheless, if we can get that far, that's a significant amount of progress towards a very difficult task. So I'm really happy to take any questions that members have on the public part of the report, and then if there's any questions that members have on the closed part, then we'll move into that part of the meeting. Thank you.
Any questions on this part of the report? Are there any questions on the closed part of the report? Wow. Well, I've got to say that we've had so many discussions and briefings, and the committee have all taken part in those, and the groups have worked really hard. And may I take this occasion, this opportunity to say thank you to the staff in finance and in the portfolio for putting forward alternatives for unpalatable proposals. They've just moved everything that could be moved, I think, to accommodate our kind of red lines. So thank you very much. So who says that it can be done in two and a half hours? Okay, so thank you very much. Thank you to all the officers who've presented and written the reports, to the members for reading such a long, such long reports. And thank you to Fiona for the admin, and Claire for the tech, and Sarah for the legal advice. And we'll see you next time. The next meeting is Monday, the 19th of December at 2pm. Oh, sorry. Oh, I forgot about those. I was too excited about finishing on time. Okay, so we, I believe, if I can find it. Are there any recommendations? Oh, at the bottom. Okay, so there's only two recommendations. Is note the update of the council 23/24 budget position, and endorse the budget proposal set out in appendix one. Thank you, and see you at next meeting. Thank you, everybody.